Should I do the update at first?
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thanks for joining us. This is the public meeting of Missoula Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, February 28th. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a public announcement and it is a proclamation for March for Meals and I will read that. Whereas the Meals on Wheels program at Missoula Aging Services is a valuable resource to older adults in Missoula County and whereas more than 800 homebound elders and adults with disabilities received Meals on Wheels in the past year with nearly 107,000 meals served in Missoula County and whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of this program through their dedication to bring not only hot nutritious meals to clients but also caring concern and attention to their welfare and whereas Missoula Aging Services counts on these volunteers and the support of the community to serve the growing numbers of elders who need this service in order to remain in their homes and whereas we wish to raise awareness and support for Meals on Wheels in Missoula and surrounding areas. Now therefore we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor of the City of Missoula do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as March for Meals Month in Missoula, Montana and invite citizens to thank the caring volunteer drivers, recognize the value of this service to homebound elders and adults with disabilities and encourage citizens to volunteer as Meals on Wheels drivers so elders may remain in their homes. And thank you, we have an entourage from Aging Services here, so thank you for all your work. I'll give you the official proclamation and yes, please if you would like to say something.
Oh, there we go. Do we even need this? Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to thank, thank you all for the support and the opportunity to make the voices of older adults heard. March for Meals raises awareness of senior hunger and isolation which are both pressing national issues that can be addressed locally. Right now, over 180 of your older neighbors and adults with disabilities are able to continue to live with dignity in their own homes because of the community's generous support. But we still need your help, so we are currently raising money to support the Meals on Wheels program. Each year, we must raise $100,000 to make Meals on Wheels possible and we are thankful for the many like-minded people, businesses, and foundations that join together every year during the month of March to make this possible. We especially appreciate the support of our county commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Rowley, Mr. Slotnick, Mr. Strohmeyer isn't here, and Mayor Engen. So, thank you and if anybody's interested in donating to Meals on Wheels, they can go to the Missoula Aging Services website. So, thank you.
Are there any other public announcements? And I will just send Commissioner Strohmeyer's regrets that he can't be here today, but he is at a renewable energy boot camp in Washington DC to bring home some great ideas for us with our sustainability coordinator, so that's exciting for him to be doing that. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda today? All right, seeing none. Our current claims list includes claims received as of January 30th, 2019 to February 20th by the commissioner's office and they total $5,270,485.94. And as always, you can go to our agenda portal and click on that and see what all claims add up to that large number you see this month. Today, we have five hearings. Unfortunately, I do have to leave at 3:30, at which point we will have no quorum, so hopefully we can kind of go get through these, but just in case, we will be moving Item C to the end, the Lolo Peak EMO Holdings, as it's not on a timeline as some of the other items are. With that, I will open up our first hearing of today, which is the second hearing to petition to abandon a county road in East Clinton addition. I'll open that with Steve Nyde.
Hello? Commissioners, Steve Nyde, County Surveyors Office, here to present the road viewer's report for the abandonment of an alley in Block 15, East Clinton, Section 27, Township 12 North, Range 17 West. The date of the viewing was February 26th, 2019. In attendance, Josh Slotnick, Missoula County Commissioner, Steve Nyde, myself, Missoula County Land Survey Manager, Garrick Swanson, representing Missoula County Parks, and Suzanne Gonstadt, the lead petitioner. At approximately noon, the attendees met at the site of the subject alley right-of-way and investigation and discussion ensued. No public access to public land would be eliminated if this alley is abandoned. The undersigned road viewers recommend abandoning the alley in Block 15, East Clinton. And I appreciate these nice, simple ones.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add as the viewer?
No, this was, as Steve pointed out, simple and straightforward and in terms of use, this area was long, long ago abandoned by any actual foot or motor vehicle traffic. There's porches and giant trees and it's not an alley in any way, shape, or form.
Great. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing. Yeah, if you want to make a motion.
I would move that we request the board to approve a petition to abandon the right-of-way situated between lots 1 through 6 and 8 through 14 of Block 15 in East Clinton addition.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Next up, we have the second hearing for the Salem Mill Gulch Road petition, which I will open with an update from Commissioner Slotnick.
Thanks. So, since we last met, the sheriff and the undersheriff went up and were able to take a look and I can say, speaking for all of us, there isn't anyone who isn't in absolute agreement that there's a real problem that needs to be solved. That is absolutely agreed upon. The sheriff and the undersheriff said that there is the potential for an emergency because the road has become so narrow, a parked car would be able to block access for emergency vehicles up to the residence. So, in the meantime, and I say meantime because we weren't able to set up a visit with the Forest Service until, correct me if I'm wrong, April 4th. So, in the meantime, we are sending a grader up there, which Eric Dixon, who works with our Public Works as an engineer, said will happen next week to widen the road. We are also going to put in some signs. Because at this point, we don't have enforcement authority, the signs will be warning signs and they'll be placed by our Public Works folks and our sheriffs supposedly in places where people will see them, and I know that that's been an issue too, but they're going to try really hard to get it right. And the signs will warn people that there's no turnaround, that this is a dangerous place to drive and they shouldn't be driving there. Obviously, that might not stop everyone, but we're going to do our best. Then on April 4th, we'll have a visit with the Forest Service and anyone who wants to is welcome to join us and we'll walk the road and we'll talk about potential solutions, long-term solutions. And then we will convene again and have a discussion. So, I would encourage you all to come to the walk-around on April 4th and we can get an exact date or exact time for you and then come to the meeting again. If you came today with public comment specifically describing how bad the situation is, we got it and given that we have all these other things, you're fully welcome to speak that truth if you wish, but know that we've heard that message loud and clear and are fully focused on solutions at this point. Thank you. Say that again? 9 to 11 is the walk-around on April 4th. Thanks.
Thank you. And so, we'll take public comment and then we'll have to find a date for the next, set the date for the next hearing sometime after April 4th, but at this point, is there any public comment on the Salem Gulch Road petition? All right, seeing none then, I will continue this hearing until, and I don't have, do you have that schedule on the other hand, Senator? April 11th, we have?
Yes.
Is that a relatively open meeting? Okay, great. So, we will continue this hearing on April 11th then, after we get a chance to do the road viewing and we can all get together and have more discussion and maybe a decision at some point on this, but no promises, right? All right. Next, we will go to Item D, Proposed Amendments to the Missoula County Flood Plane Regulations and I'll open that with a staff report by Todd Kleats.
Afternoon Commissioners, Todd Kleats, Missoula County Flood Plane Administrator. The reason why we're bringing regulatory updates to you today is that we have new flood plane maps which go into effect on March 7th for the entire county. It's a new flood insurance study for the entire county, including the city of Missoula, but the only maps that are actually being updated are those for the Swan River and those were actually adopted by Missoula County back in 2017 for local regulatory purposes. FEMA is just now getting them produced for flood insurance purposes. To show you what we had in, this is our 2015 flood plane map of the Swan River and to zoom in on one particular location, you can see that there's about a mile and a half of the Swan River that's actually not shown as being within the regulatory flood plane, which was a problem. So, we asked FEMA and the state to help us get that sorted out and they have. This is the new flood plane map that goes into effect again March 7th and you can see that there are both threads of the Swan River there are now within the flood plane and the flood plane map is actually quite a bit better, more accurate than what the earlier map was in that it has 100-year flood elevations on it and it also has a detailed floodway and the 500-year flood plane has also been identified. So, to get the actual regulations, what we're doing are just some minor amendments to those. We are updating the date of the FEMA flood plane maps from 2015 to March 7th of 2019. We're specifying the requirements for AH flood zones, which are shallow ponding areas. We're notifying FEMA of variance decisions should the county commissioners choose to issue a variance from the flood plane regulations. FEMA requires that those be sent to FEMA. And we're also amending the numbering, a minor numbering issue in Section 5. So, specifically for variances, the last portion of this sentence is what we're adding and the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, they will be notified. That's in Section 4.05. In Section 5.05, we're adding Zone AH to the AO flood plane. And again, there are three locations in Montana that have AH flood planes. Missoula County is one of them. We'll be the first to actually have a specific regulation for them. And again, because we've had these on our flood plane regulations since 1983, on our flood plane maps from 1983, what we're doing at this point is just specifying what folks who want to develop in those areas would have to do. And the last is this 5.02A8. We had this as 5.02A8A and B and then 5.02A9. Those were all supposed to be together under 5.02A8. So, we have now AB and C under 5.02A8 instead of AB and then 5.02A9 under C. So, we just moved that up one notch. That's our recommended motion. We did go out for public comment on this. We received none, so we would make this recommendation that you approve the new flood plane regulations.
Thanks. Do you have any questions for Todd?
Are there any structures that are now in the flood plane that weren't in the flood plane on the old map?
Yes, there are. There are. I think there are five or seven structures that are now coming into the flood plane for flood insurance purposes. What we were able to do, which was I think the first time that this has ever been happening in the state is that the state had a little bit leftover funding from this particular flood study where they were able to send out surveyors to the homes that wanted these surveys to be conducted to identify what their elevation was compared to the 100-year flood and produce what are actually called elevation certificates, which is for these particular properties. If they were to sell these properties, they would need an elevation certificate for anybody to get a conventional mortgage on it. So, in this particular case, because there was some leftover funding, we were able to provide that for the homeowners that wanted us to do that for them.
Great. So, does this mean now that those homeowners will now have to get flood insurance?
If they have a conventional mortgage on their home, their lender will notify them that they will need flood insurance.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. Is there any public comment on the recommended changes to the flood plane regulations? Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close that hearing.
All right, I would move that the board approve the proposed amendments to the Missoula County Flood Plane Regulations to update the date of the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA flood plane maps, specify requirements for AH flood zones, notify FEMA of variance decisions, and amend numbering in Section 5.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Todd. Next up, I will open the hearing for Lyles Lane Minor Subdivision with a staff report by Casey Drayton.
Thanks, Casey Drayton, here to present the staff report for the Lyles Lane Minor Subdivision. The applicant for the subdivision are, the applicants are Dr. Timothy and Dr. Kelly Bagnell. They are represented today by Missoula Engineering. We have James Sage here with us for the public hearing on this item. The project location, as seen on the map on the screen, is out just off the I-90 interchange out at French Town. It's highlighted in the blue outline there, just over seven acres of property that we'll be looking at today. The existing conditions on the site consist of a dental clinic, kind of on the left-hand side of the screen that you see here today, and the remainder of the site is relatively flat with sort of an open grass, brushy area, so no other development on the property at this time other than the existing dental clinic. Here's a few photos just to show you what the back half of that property looks like. The photo on the left would be taken from behind the dental clinic. The photo on the right would be taken from Gerard Lane, which on this, you can see Gerard Lane highlighted kind of at the top right-hand side of the screen here, looking back across the property. And then two other photos here just to show the two roads that are accessing the property. The left photo would be Gerard Lane that I just went over and the right photo would be the entrance to Belker Lane from the French Town Frontage Road and the turnoff into the dental clinic. So, proposed in the subdivision, as I mentioned, it's a minor subdivision. We have three lots proposed. We have Lot 1, which would contain the existing dental clinic down at the lower-left side. We would have Lot 2, which is a larger tract that would be just over five acres in size, proposed for a veterinarian clinic. And then we would have Lot 3, which is proposed for residential use, which would be just over one acre or an acre and a half in size at the top right-hand side of the screen at the sort of terminus of Gerard Lane. So, looking into our review criteria for subdivision requests, the first item would be zoning and growth policy compliance. The property is in an unzoned area of Missoula County. The closest zoning would probably be in Houson where there's a citizen-initiated zoning district, but otherwise, the majority of the French Town area remains unzoned. Looking at the growth policy, comprehensive plans, and land use recommendations for this property, the property is within the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide, which was based on land use designations from the 75 Comprehensive Plan. That older plan originally called for residential development at one dwelling unit per 10 acres. When the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide came in, they identified activity centers. This property is located almost at the true center of the French Town Activity Center, which recommends denser development, some more commercial opportunities. It offers a little bit of flexibility for property owners within that range to stray outside of what those original underlying designations were. It speaks to residential density up to one or two dwelling units per acre as well as some commercial uses as well. So, we find that this proposal substantially complies with the land use designation as well as the unzoned designation that the property is on. Looking at agriculture and agricultural water user facilities, we find that this property is located in an area with soils classified as farmland of local importance. There is a large share of the French Town area that meets this classification or other prime soils for farming purposes. Staff has found and it's detailed, more in-depth in the staff report and all the findings, that the applicants have mitigated their impacts to agriculture through a variety of ways. They have provided notification in the covenants that there may be adjacent agricultural activities. We're looking primarily at the vet clinic in this case on the five-acre tract. They're proposing the lots to be large lots per the subdivision regulations, so over one acre in size. Agricultural opportunities would still be available on these properties. Specifically, the vet clinic, looking into the definition of ag to be used for equine purposes, would support agriculture, not just on this property, but in the surrounding French Town area as well, where it's been noted that there's a need for this type of facility. So, you can see here again just that we have those large lot sizes, primarily looking at Lot 2, which is just over five acres. Development is proposed to be relatively contained to one portion of the property, which would then leave a relatively undisturbed area of sort of the central location of this property. Staff has also found that the, as previously mentioned, the comprehensive plans and growth policy have identified this area for some sort of higher-density development as opposed to open and resource-type uses. You see the open and resource designation as you get over towards Roman Creek Road or a lot of it down, which is in regulatory flood plane on the south side of the French Town town site. So, there are a lot of other areas within the French Town Activity Center that have been contemplated more for agricultural use than this particular property even has. So, it has been identified through plant, planning documents over time that this would be an area of development. We would also like to note that there is agricultural water directly adjacent to this property. It's not located on the property. At one point in time, there was an agricultural ditch that ran along the southern border of the property. That ditch was abandoned and there is information in the application from the ditch rights holder, in that case, it wasn't the property owner, stating that they had abandoned it for a more direct access to water from Milk Creek. So, what we have left is the French Town Irrigation District ditch, which is shown as this orange line here on the screen in front of you, directly adjacent to the property. Staff has recommended a condition to put in a easement to allow future lot owners within this subdivision access to that water. That way, if, say, that Lot 2, which would probably be the most likely user ever wanted agricultural water from the ditch, because they're part of the irrigation district, they would have the ability to run the necessary facilities to them to provide agricultural water for whatever operation that may look like in the future. That could also go for Lot 1 as well. We understand it is currently a dental clinic, but that doesn't mean it always will be a dental clinic. So, in case there's ever any need there for agricultural water, that easement would guarantee that those lot owners have access to it. There's also an additional condition relating to water and irrigation on the properties. The applicants have proposed that only a certain amount of acreage would be watered from the domestic wells to comply with the NRC Combined Appropriation Regulations. So, staff has recommended that those acreages be noticed in the covenants so that you don't find property owners overwatering their acreage and exceeding that combined appropriation calculation. I would like to know while we're on the topic that while this is proposed for a vet clinic, currently the property is unzoned. Because the subdivision approval says it's going to be a vet clinic, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're conditioning it on use in this case. So, theoretically, it could be a residential unit on the property. There could be some other form of commercial use on the property or it could be farmed in that case. So, there is some flexibility there. It would be reviewed for land use review when somebody goes to build on the property and we're not necessarily looking at use-specific in that case, although they would need to comply with sanitation requirements. And there could be further restrictions through the covenants or something, but in this case, staff has found that there's enough factors going here that there is some flexibility on the property. However, they are maintaining a fair share of the lot for potential agricultural uses in the future. Looking into local services, the next review criteria, primarily with roads here. As I mentioned, we have Belker Lane, which comes off the French Town Frontage Road. It's currently a 30-foot-wide gravel surface roadway, which accesses Lot 1 with an existing access point there. To access Lots 2 and 3, you would need to go up and make a right-hand turn onto Gerard Lane. If you remember back from that earlier photo, Gerard Lane was a pretty narrow roadway at some points, maybe only 14 feet in width, and there are some fences and things along it. So, the applicant has proposed to increase that road width to a 24-foot-wide gravel surface, which staff would find adequate to provide access to the vet clinic as well as the residential unit down the way. Since the application was submitted, the property owner just to the north had filed a family transfer that was previously approved, which created essentially five residential lots just to the north. So, we find that there may be some heavier traffic in the future on this road. So, a 24-foot-wide gravel surface would certainly accommodate the development that's proposed there. You basically hit a dead end though, once you get to the irrigation district ditch. We don't feel that there's really any connectivity past that point. And staff has recommended two conditions relating to roadways, one of which being that the applicant needs to show prior to final plat approval that they do have legal access along both roads for the properties within the subdivision. This is kind of an interesting makeup of a variety of access easements over time, so we just want to have one final verification look to make sure that the legal access truly is in fact there. They're proposing to essentially overlay a new easement, which would solve all the questions that would be there if they have all the signatures on that document. And the other condition is basically stating that the 24-foot wide road surface would terminate where that easement is proposed to end, which is approximately at the end of Lot 2 here, where it would meet Lot 3 of the subdivision. It would then turn into a private driveway at that point to access this residential unit down at the end. And part of that has to do with the, getting the 60-foot-wide access easement. It would terminate at that point on the properties to the north as well, so the road would end there in an approved turnaround. there in an approved turnaround. There would then be two separate driveways. One would go to the property up to the north, one would come to this residential development at the south. Looking at some of those other local service review criterias, pedestrian facilities, there's no ped facilities proposed in this subdivision. There is the new trail along the Frenchtown Frontage Road, so in fairly close proximity. Pedestrian facilities are not required with a minor subdivision, nor are they proposed in this subdivision. In terms of water and sanitation, they are proposing individual wells and septic systems for each of the three lots. Lot 1, with the dental clinic, has existing facilities, so they have a public water supply, as well as a public sanitation facility. They have stated that those public facilities do not have the capacity to entertain additional development from Lots 2 and 3. So they've provided that information in their application. So with that, on Lot 2, they're proposing a new public supply, and on Lot 3, a new private supply for both water and sanitation. They've shown us that they have adequate drain field replacement, drain fields, mixing zones, as well as well-isolation zones within the properties. So I believe they're working currently with the Q on obtaining those approvals for those In terms of solid waste, solid waste will be provided by Republic Services, who've confirmed service for this area. Parks and Recreation, there's no parkland dedication or cash-in-lieu of parkland dedication proposed, nor is any required in a minor subdivision. In terms of the school district, we feel that Frenchtown School District has adequate capacity to accommodate one additional residential dwelling proposed. They were contacted for comments and provided none. In terms of fire protection, we feel that there's adequate access to allow emergency services to get to each of these properties. They are proposing residential or commercial fire sprinklers as their chosen water supply for fire suppression. There is a condition relating to a note on the plat for that, as well as language in the covenants to notify future property owners that that is required. And police protection would be available in a manner that is consistent with where it's located. In terms of natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat, most of the findings relate to sort of the location of this property relationally to the other natural features in the area. As you can see, we're fairly close to developed transportation corridors, primarily I-90 is what we're talking about here, as well as some surrounding kind of rural residential development. There is a chance that there could be wildlife wandering through this area, but we don't find it to be any overly or extremely valuable habitat, at least that's been raised as a concern or identified to us. There are some, there is language in the covenants about living with wildlife, so that puts lot owners on notice as to some recommended best practices in terms of living in an area where you may encounter wildlife. The only other comment relating to wildlife that was raised was from Five Valleys Audubon, who noted that the woody and brushy area along the southern border of the property may have some valuable habitat for birds passing through the area. But looking at the development proposed for this property, we feel that nobody's going to be building probably right on those lot lines anyways, so it wasn't a major concern in this case. Usually, there's a little bit of buffer between a building and the property line. As mentioned, public health and safety, we have fire services less than one mile away and police services 16 miles away, based out of Missoula in this location. On other public health and safety concerns, there was a little bit of a concern over flood hazard from Mill Creek. Mill Creek is an undelineated creek for floodplain purposes. They are within 2,000 horizontal feet and 20 vertical feet of that stream, which requires them to either map out the 100-year floodplain for this location or provide information from DNRC that essentially waves off the risk to this property. So they worked with DNRC and provided DNRC adequate information to show them that they are not within a 100-year flood hazard area. DNRC provided information in the application that confirms that. We have found that there is groundwater within 10 feet of the surface of this property. The applicant put together a groundwater mitigation plan, with the main item in that plan being a recommendation that there be no basements allowed in the subdivision. So we've mirrored that in a condition that requires that statement to be put on the face of the plat or conditions of approval sheet. That'll notice future lot owners of that provision in there. That way, they don't come in expecting to put a basement in if they do their homework and read the documents on the front end. We found that the subdivision complies with survey requirements. It complied with subdivision regulations and review procedures. The hearing today was noticed to adjacent property owners. We haven't received any comments, written comments from any of those adjacent property owners. It also went out to agency comments. Those are included in the application, have been contemplated in the staff report and recommended conditions. There's adequate easements for utilities represented on the preliminary plat and in the subdivision to guarantee, or at least offer up the ability for utilities to be delivered to each of these properties. And they've provided adequate information in the application to show us that they have physical access that will be improved as part of this application, and legal access. And like I said, there's that one condition, just as a final check at final plat approval, that the legal access is all tight and buttoned up for them. With that, staff has recommended approval of the subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thanks. Do you have any questions for Casey?
So I guess these are more comments than questions. Can I comment? So first, I want to commend you on good work and making sure that the ditch remains and that irrigation pressure does not land on those wells. I think we should keep the pressure off the aquifer and onto existing publicly-funded infrastructure, which is an irrigation ditch, so good on you for that. I don't believe that taking, that creating one-acre lots on agricultural soil, soil that's deemed by the NRCS to be of local state importance or prime if irrigated, is actual mitigation. I have no problem with this subdivision. I'm excited to see the economic activity, and it's well-designed and great. This is just for, more for the future. Taking 10 acres of ag land or whatever large chunk and creating one-acre lots, that is not mitigation, that's loss. I just wanted to make sure it said that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. And is there a comment from the applicant or the applicant's representative?
We don't have any issues with any of the conditions of approval. We appreciate Casey putting together such a well-prepared staff report.
And you are James Sage?
Yes, James Sage with Missoula Engineering. The only comment we had was related to condition number seven, which required an easement be provided for irrigation access to all of the lots. We would like that to be amended, to only require an easement be provided for Lots 2 and 3, as Lot 1 is currently served by a dental clinic. They have an underground sprinkler system. It's well landscaped. We don't foresee any changes in the near future to that lot. And we just believe that placing an easement and encumbering the other two lots wouldn't be necessary. So that's our only comment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you flip back to the map of the property? Because the other properties on Belker Lane, what is that currently, and does that have irrigation access? The non-dental ones, the ones that are kind of up here?
Are you talking about like
Yeah.
storage units that are over there?
Is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know. They likely would not have access to it unless they could show that these easements that run along the roadway would allow for irrigation facilities. Irrigation facilities aren't commonly associated with kind of your normal, you know, necessary utilities, like electric or telephone cable, things like that. So I've talked with James and said, at least for this subdivision, if they could overlay the road easements with the ability within irrigation easement, that that would be seen as acceptable as well. But, you know, they would need some way to get it over there, and it would be up to that property owner to truly figure out if they had legal access to put a pipe through any of those easements in there.
Okay. So essentially, potentially, right now, that lot does not have access to the irrigation canal?
It may or it may not. I couldn't say one way or the other, truly.
Just because as far as like the consistency of a development pattern, the dental office is as or more commercialized as storage units. And to have everything on Belker Lane be really more commercial and not have access to irrigation and everything on Gerard be more agricultural makes sense to me. I don't see the dental office, even if it doesn't stay a dental office, I don't see it being leveled and used for agriculture when it's right off the Frontage Road in the future. I see it as a development site. So I would support the request for amendment, but...
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Rowley. When I was speaking about irrigation, I was talking about those larger lots. The dental lot is small and a dental office, and I can't imagine it would ever be anything but some commercial entity on that one space.
And is the, is the water in the well adequate for irrigation of that small lot? Like, that wouldn't need access to irrigation just for a lawn of some sort?
Correct. Yeah.
So, okay. In that case, I would make a motion to amend condition number seven, to read that an easement in accordance with subdivision regulations, Section 3.1.5.2, shall be provided on the final plat to lots, are those 1 and 2?
2 and 3 are the
2 and 3.
The 2 to the east.
Yes.
The 2 up top, shown on the screen here.
So on the final plat, to lots 2 and 3 within the subdivision, to allow for the delivery of water from the Frenchtown Irrigation District ditch adjacent to the subdivision, or information shall be provided to show that the property has been removed from the district, subject to CAPS review and approval prior to final plat approval.
I would second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do we have any other points of discussion or questions, or are we good with it?
Good work.
Great. So could I get a, or I could make the motion, or you could, for approving the subdivision as amended?
I would move reapprove the subdivision as amended.
All right, subject to the conditions of approval.
Subject to the
I'm just reading this.
Thank you. Yes.
Thanks. I'll second that. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great. Thanks. All right, and we're going to get to you after all, Jamie. It's your lucky day. So next up, I will open our last hearing of the day for the Lolo Peak EMO Holdings LLC Boundary Line Relocation with a staff report by Jamie Urbacher.
Dale McCormick is here today representing Al Zapata. Al should be in here any minute, so if he walks in. As you mentioned, this is a request from Al Zapata, who represents Lolo Peak EMO Holdings LLC, to use the Boundary Line relocation and lot aggregation exemptions from the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act. Typically, Boundary Line relocations and lot aggregations can be approved administratively. However, because, because this involves more than five lots in a platted subdivision, the commissioners must make the determination that this is not an invasion of subdivision. This proposal proposes to relocate common boundaries and aggregate lots between 10 existing parcels. The final design will result in six lots that will allow for separate ownership of the lots in a configuration that complies with zoning and accommodates the existing and proposed developments of the new lots. The properties are located off of the East Missoula-I-90 interchange. Al purchased these properties between June of 2017 and August of 2018, during which time he also had a portion of the Speedway Avenue abandoned. The north half of the abandoned Speedway Avenue and the lots to the north of it are Zone CC2. The south half of the abandoned Speedway and the lots to the south are unzoned. The 1998 Urban Comp Plan recommends community commercial land use on the north side of Speedway, and the plan recommends residential six dwelling units per acre on the south side of Speedway. All of these properties are located out of the designated floodplain. So since this relocation involves 10 lots in a platted subdivision, the applicant had to demonstrate how each Boundary Line relocation could be accomplished independently and only involve five lots or fewer at a time. So this first exemption that I'm showing came about during agency comment. The clerk and recorder provided documentation that four lots actually existed in what we thought were all one-track, known as Track G COS 1001. So this first exemption is a simple aggregation of four lots into one lot, as outlined in the red on the screen. The second exemption involves three tracks, Lots 26, 27, and the proposed Track G, which was created by that first exemption. The proposal here is to aggregate three lots into two and relocate the common boundaries as shown above. This will result in the proposed Lot 1 and proposed Lot 2. The third and final exemption involves five tracks, which include the proposed Lot 1, Track H, Lot 3, Lot 4, and Lot 5. This is a Boundary Line relocation that will result in five new lot configurations. Proposed Lot 1 will be 17,537 square feet. Proposed Lot 3 will be 2,193 square feet. Proposed Lot 4 will be 3,223 square feet. Proposed Lot 5 at 2,786 square feet, and proposed Lot 6 at 3,095 square feet. So here is a clear picture of the final lot configuration of all six parcels. The boundaries are very unique, however planned that way and around the proposed or existing The applicant can file all of these exemptions on one final plat or amended plat. It reduces confusion, not only for our office, but realtors and everybody else, so we recommend This is going to be the final build-out of the area and what it will look like. Most of this is already under construction, with the exception of one triangle home in the southwest corner. So Lot 1 will have the 15 plex and the additional single-family residence. Lot 2 will, has a single-family residence that's under construction. Lot 3 is also a single-family residence under construction. Lot 4 is a duplex. Lot 5 is a single-family residence, and then Lot 6 is an existing single-family residence. So during update, I'd mentioned that the home that is not yet built is considered a triangle home, if you will, and you're interested in seeing what that might look like once it's built. So here's some design elevations. Go back. There you go. Yeah, pretty cool concept.
Yeah.
Floor plan. So like all exemptions, Boundary Line relocations and lot aggregations must comply with the general evasion criteria and any applicable rebuttable presumptions for that specific exemption. So with regards to the general evasion criteria, I will note that Al is a builder and a developer and purchased these properties within the last two years. The development will have common parking areas, easements, and roads. However, all of these are permissible by zoning and can and are being built right now with the existing lot configuration. But in order to sell them off individually, Al is looking to relocate those boundary lines. Neither the Boundary Line relocation or the lot aggregation triggered specific rebuttable presumptions, with the exception of requiring this hearing and your approval. So based on the facts that I presented and the additional facts in the staff report, we are recommending approval of this Boundary Line relocation and lot aggregation exemption. And I believe Al showed up. If you have questions for him, or Dale is here as well.
Do you have questions for Jamie before Al comes up? Josh?
No.
Does the applicant or applicant's representative want to speak?
Dale McCormick with PCI, representing Al Zapata. Want to thank Jamie for working through this process. It was interesting to try to figure out how to take those 10 lots and turn it into the six lots that are largely defined by the zoning the six slots that are largely defined by the zoning setbacks and the fact that part of the land is unzoned, part of the land is zoned. And so they're very idiosyncratic lot lines, but they're for a good reason. And I think the result will be a very positive contribution, kind of a gateway to East Missoula. And I would ask for your support in this request. And if you have any questions for me or Al, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. All right, no, it is kind of funny to look at it first. So, but very creative, and I love the concept. I think this is, this is creative development, and I really support this project. I like it, so...
I want to just second that. Thrilled to see this type of housing. It's small enough that it should be affordable in a place that's not that far from Missoula, so way to be creative.
Great. And with that, it doesn't sound like we'll have anything other than a motion. Do you want to make that?
Sure.
Yep.
I moved at the request by Lolo Peak EMO Holdings LLC to utilize the Boundary Line Relocation and Lot Aggregation Exemptions to the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act in accordance with MCA 76-3-207 ID and MCA 76-3-207 IF be approved.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. All right. I haven't seen a triangle home. I asked them to bring these because I didn't quite, I couldn't, I'm not very creative, so I couldn't visualize it, but that's really cool. I really love the windows and the terraces, so... Anyway, is there any other business to come before the commission today? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thanks.